We got everybody, we're back. All right. Thank you all. We are resuming our council meeting. I just need to go through a couple of procedures. For those of you, we are streaming live. So those of you that are participating remotely, star nine will indicate you have a question. If you're on your phone, it's star nine, star six to mute and unmute your phone. If you're on Zoom, there's an icon, a little hand icon, which will allow you to raise your hand and indicate you have a question. If you're participating remotely or in person tonight and you're speaking, please state your name and address clearly for the town clerk. And with that, we will continue on. First item is the president's executive summary. I do not have an update, but I would like to take a moment just on behalf of the council to express our condolences to the family of Bill Eether on his passing. Bill was a member of the Portsmouth Fire Department for over twenty-three years and retired as a fire marshal in two thousand and nineteen. So Bill will be sorely missed. So just wanted to state that his services were this past weekend, for those of you that were obviously able to attend. With that, we will move on to our consent agenda.
Move to approve is presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Mr. Katzman?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Leveque?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes six to zero. And next we have minutes from our January ninth meeting.
Mr. President, will they be approved as printed?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Mr. Katzman?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Leveque?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Next, we will move on to our town administrators' report. Mr. Rayner.
Again, good evening, Mr. President, Town Council, ladies and gentlemen. I informed you at the last council meeting that Moody's Investor Service had revised its rating methodology and that Portsmouth was one of the cities and towns under review for a possible change in our bond rating. In a meeting with Moody's, our team successfully impressed upon the agency the strength of Portsmouth in all key areas. After their analysis, Moody's has issued a decision to maintain Portsmouth AA two rating. So together with the standard and poor's triple A rating, Portsmouth remains one of the highest rated municipalities in Rhode Island. With respect to the audit, the annual audit report is in the final stage of completion. As stated at the last meeting, an extension was granted to Portsmouth. This was for one reason. Portsmouth experienced significant turnover in the finance department during the course of the fiscal year with the loss of the finance director, the deputy finance director, and additionally, the accounts payable clerk was on extended leave due to medical reasons. Barring any state division of revenue delays, work has reached a point where we and our auditor believe that the audit report will be ready for submission to the auditor general by the end of the month. And then again, another friendly reminder, there will be a state required ethics training session next Monday, January thirtieth at seven P M. The town clerk has notified council staff and committee members required to attend, and she sent another reminder this morning. The training will be available via Zoom, and there will be a link available after the training for those unable to participate in the Monday evening sessions. Additionally, I am extremely happy to announce that we received word this morning that the Division of Statewide Planning has approved the Portsmouth Comprehensive Community Plan. This is a major accomplishment and reflects highly on everyone who was involved in that project. With this approval, we will now prepare our strategy to align the zoning ordinance with the comp plan. And then lastly, I'll also echo your remarks with the passing regarding the passing of Bill Eether. Bill loved Portsmouth and served our town in many ways. As you stated, he retired from the fire department as our fire marshal in April two thousand and nineteen. His passing deeply affects all who knew and worked with him, and we offer our deepest sympathy to his wife, his family, and all those who loved and knew him. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Rayner. Okay, on to resignations and appointments. First item is a resignation from the Economic Development Committee for Amy Holman.
Mr. President, will we accept the resignation with regret?
Second.
Third.
All those in favor?
Mr. Katzman?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Leveque?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Okay, moving on, old business. First item is our monthly finance report.
Evening, Mr. President, members of the council. As of the end of December twenty twenty-two, the town was six months or fifty percent through fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Year-to-date general fund revenues were at fifty-three percent of total budget, and year-to-date general fund expenditures were at forty-nine percent of total budget. Revenues were helped by favorable tax collection rates and building inspection receipts, and expenditures are right on schedule. The fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget cycle is underway. We've begun our department head reviews, and I expect to complete those at the end of this week. And finally, as Mr. Rayner alluded to, the fiscal year twenty twenty-two audit is on track to be completed by the January thirty-first deadline. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patrick.
Motion received and placed on file.
All those in favor?
Mr. Katzman?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Leveque?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Okay, moving on to new business. First item is a public hearing. It's a request approval for a proposed amendment to chapter four oh five of the zoning ordinance, Article Five Use Regulations, Land Use Table Section A fourteen Planned Resort Development, and Article Eight Land Development Projects, Section D Planned Unit Development, four G Planned Resort Development. Mr. Chappelle?
Good evening, everyone. Court Chappelle Law Office is at one seventy-one Chase Road. I'm here tonight to propose a law change generally for the Equinix Club. I have a few people here with me tonight. I'd like to introduce Mr. David Allen, who is a representative of the Equinix Club, certainly if you have any questions. Jeff Salatin and Chris Karsalis, who are representatives from a development company that is helping bring this portion of what we need to have done for, to complete some of the development down there. Mr. Dennis Dupree, who's an engineer known to most of you, who has played an integral part in the development of Carnegie as a whole. So my job here tonight is to explain to you what the law is currently, what the amendment is, why we're doing it, and to answer some questions. What's in it for you? What's in it for me? And why do we need it? So I need to begin by saying that the Equinix Club already exists. Nothing you're doing tonight is developing property. Nothing you're doing tonight is adding a unit. Nothing is subtracting a unit. The problem is, is that right now we have a resort ordinance. Historically, I gave you a package that suggests what happened to Carnegie from its inception in nineteen ninety-eight and how we got to where we are. But it was not developed under the resort ordinance. In two thousand and six, the council put together a resort ordinance. That was really because they were developing the Warehouser property or the Newport Beach Club. And the council teamed up with the then-planning department gentleman by the name of Bob Gilstein and met with Mr. Brian O'Neill, who was proposing what was happening at Warehouser and said, look, we want a resort there. We want to put in pools. We want to put in tennis courts. We want a club. We want a hotel. We want multi-housing. We want some single-family housing. We want some apartments. We want a bunch of varieties. This is happening in other places throughout our community. We just need a resort ordinance because, I'll explain it, but Carnegie wasn't developed that way. And all the Kingsmen and all the horses got together and they passed this resort ordinance in two thousand and nine. And what you need to know about the resort ordinance is it's just a ordinance that allows homeowners to put together contiguous pieces of property and to say, I would like this resort on these six pieces. The planning board, not the zoning board, but the planning board under what's called a P U D or Planned Urban Development, then looks at it, appoints whether they needed their private, has the ability to hire engineers for the town, and puts forth the criteria set forth in that ordinance. That ordinance, because I know this board is loaded on X zoning guys. It has all the criteria, what we call the A through J criteria of a special use permit. Fits with the comprehensive plan, not detrimental to the neighborhood, not creating hazards, worried about solar rights, air, well. But they added, because that was done in sixty-four, they added that in two thousand and eight. Open space requirements, wildlife requirements, studies on habitat, all the things that are in newer ordinances, that's all in the resort ordinance. All those safeguards exist in that ordinance. The problem was, rather than make that ordinance town-wide, which is what I believe every other ordinance you have, is just take the zoning ordinance and look at your land, take it to Article Five and say, I'm in a residential R twenty, doesn't matter where in town, I'm an R twenty, it says I can have a single-family house. Your ordinance has Y's for yes, you can do it, N's for no, you can't do it, and S's for you can do it by special use permit, which is you need to convince the board that it's good for us. It should be a conditional approval, and we need to put in safeguards to make sure it's safe for the neighborhoods. When they did the resort ordinance, again, unlike any other ordinance, they didn't say town-wide. They kind of made it pretty unique to the Warehouser property. They said, we're going to set geographical boundaries on where the resort ordinance can be. So picture this, because you're all well-versed in our town, the Mountain Hole Bridge, Bristol Ferry Road, Willow Lane, and the Sakana. That created a box of just that side of town. Now look at it and go, what do I consider to be the Carnegie Club? The tower at Kaiser is on the south side of Willow and misses the resort by whatever distance it is off the road. The country club is all on the south side. The marina is split right in half. The marina, because it's on the end of Willow, is half on the south of Willow and half on the north of Willow. Lot ten is a six and six-point-four acre piece, all on the north side. Lot five, which is another one-acre piece, is all on the north side. So when you look at the eighty acres that make up the Carnegie pieces, twenty-six-two, twenty-six-four, twenty-six D and E, the eighty acres, three-quarters or so are on the right side and a quarter is on the left side. When you look at the amenity that makes up the resort, that's all the Portsmouth Abbey land. For those of you that weren't around then, remember that the Equinix Club does not own the real estate under the clubhouse or under the golf course. That is owned by the Portsmouth Abbey, the ninety-nine-year lease. That lease does not allow condos, buildings, development of any kind. That was incorporated into the nineteen ninety-eight decision when Peter DeSavory had it approved, that there was no resort development, no, not resort development, no residential development other than what was approved. So what is being done here is not to say, hey, can the Abbey property be added to ours so we can add a bunch of condos on it? Absolutely not the case. Not allowed by lease, not allowed by the Abbey, and not allowed by the original decisions. What we're trying to do is merely change the jurisdiction. So currently, in Article Five, under the resort division, there is a Y. Means, yes, you can have a resort in R twenty, R thirty, R forty in heavy industry, but there's an asterisk. The asterisk says, but only if you're R twenty, thirty, forty, or resident, or heavy industrial, is north of Willow. We're merely just trying to say, leave that definition alone. We're not trying to say Glen Farm or some other piece of property anywhere in town, but let's at least add to that those three or four parcels that are currently occupied by Carnegie. And currently, the only resort that if we all close our eyes and someone says, hey, is there a resort in town? You go, yeah, Carnegie. But that's not part of the resort ordinance. So we're just trying to add those pieces, and the pieces that we're adding are already developed to capacity. What we're doing is not adding one piece on it. And I don't think that portion of what we're doing is controversial at all. Why are we doing it? Pretty good choice. Well, it all happened back with a different zoning board and different solicitors, different lawyers. And up comes, I wasn't involved. In fact, I was a skeptical neighbor normally against Carnegie, who used to hear people say, don't worry about the density. It's not that dense. This is going to be very high-end houses. People are going to use it eighteen to twenty days a year. We're going to have a very high tax base and is going to be very low on service. Very rarely do you get to look back and see if you were right. I truly believe the zoning board and the council that allowed Carnegie, it's the greatest accomplishment maybe other than the Glen in my lifetime in Portsmouth. They have added that. I took the liberty, which is a lie, I made my son do it, to look up every single property that's on your list to be included, the things we call the Equinix Club, to look up the tax assessments on the moorings, the cabanas, the personal property, the golf course, the towers, the residences. It is an assessment of just south of a hundred and seventy million dollars in less than eighty acres of land, not counting the Abbey. You have three-point-two million dollars in revenue. You have, to my knowledge, not one child in the school system. They are private roads. You ain't plowing them. You're not delivering mail to them. You're not even, well, you don't take anyone's garbage, I guess. But generally speaking, considering it was an industrial area that was in my lifetime before Carnegie, an abandoned Kaiser, an abandoned Montauk Point Electric Program. You have created jobs. You have created revenue. And other than density and people saying, what's happening, you know, how many people are involved down there? You really have no negative impacts. We live there. It's not traffic. It really happens to be a very good neighbor, and it happens to be something that I, again, think the town should be proud of. With that said, my, as a legal theorist, because we've got the zoning board and legal guys up there, how it got there is beyond me. Remember, it is industrial, heavy industry. Go look at Article Five. Condominiums, apartments, and townhouses are not allowed. It requires a use variance. The definition of a use variance, I need to convince the zoning board, there is no beneficial use of my property. So how did it get there? I gave you the full history, but a guy named Andy Patakevich proposed a hotel on the old Kaiser property. He was the first one to have that property under contract. He came in and said hotels are allowed under Article Seven, Section D, in heavy industrial zones by special use permit. And he got granted a three-hundred-and-sixty-eight-room hotel. Lot of it was in the tower. Remember, the tower was also a ten-acre building around the tower. That ten-acre was coming down. There was a building called the Garden Annex, which would be another three hundred units. Then came Peter DeSavory, who got in with the Abbey and got permission to put a golf course. Peter DeSavory then buys the contract on Kaiser Aluminum, which is the tower, lot ten across the street, lot two now part of Newport Beach Club and another lot, and says, if I can get them from you, I'll incorporate them in a resort. There was no resort ordinance, but a hotel and a resort are often used synonymously. So they said, well, rather than have a three-hundred-and-sixty-eight-room hotel, why don't we have a three-hundred-room hotel and we'll put twenty or thirty glorified timeshare units? They were first called. And I attached all the decisions because you can actually see the evolution. It wasn't until two thousand and nine where somebody actually used the word apartment. Until then, they were, the testimony was, you know, a four-hundred-foot hotel room? Oh, this is a three-thousand-foot hotel room. But it doesn't, it's the same amount of people coming. It's just people may own them, put them in the pool to rent, and it's still going to be resort. Guy named Paul Hogan, that we all knew and respected, testified that on the average, the owners would be there from five to eighteen days a year. And for the most part, at least pre-COVID, I think that was basically true. I think there's more year-round occupants, especially in the tower now, than they're used to be. But they actually came in and kept modifying the original special use permit. We granted the hotel and we granted the golf course. In two thousand and one, we married the two special use permits. Every time they came forward for the next fifteen years, it wasn't a special use permit on one lot. It was treating them all as a whole. And you had to treat them as a whole, because remember, things like the tower with three-hundred-and-sixty-eight hotel rooms would have required three-hundred-and-seventy parking spaces. Those parking spaces were across the street on what was known as Lot Ten. The reason you have to treat them together is because if you granted the hotel and didn't treat them together, then sold off Lot Ten, and somebody said, I want to put my house on Lot Ten, the zoning board would say, excuse me, but now we have no hotel parking. So they have always been treated together. But when we came lately, we recognized that problem. I met with then-Mike Assioa and said, you know, this was quite a legal theory back in the day. What do we do now? I can't go in front of the planning board as a resort because I only have jurisdiction on half of my project. I can go back as a special use permit and try to amend. At least there's been a very strong debate and difference of opinion on whether or not that's possible now, because there is a resort ordinance. And now it's very tough to draw an analogy that a resort is a hotel when sitting in your ordinance is the resort. You can still, remember, for a while, we couldn't even draw analogies because of Fontaine. And then when we decided you could draw analogies, it's still hard to draw analogy that you have a resort when you have a resort ordinance. So disregard the thing that it really is and call it something close, which is a glor, it just got difficult. It just makes sense. So when I say I believe that my clients have the right to ask, I don't have the right to win, but I do think you have the right to ask. And in order to ask, we have to get to a forum that doesn't require a use variance on the lot left, which is Lot Ten, a six-point-four acre piece that already was granted permission back in two thousand and nine to have seven apartment buildings on it. If you treat it individually now as an island, think of really, there's an industrial piece now, a six-acre piece right in the middle of Carnegie. I'm pretty sure the town doesn't think that it's a good industrial lot. That would be a nightmare, right? But to treat it individually as opposed to looking at it as a whole would be a little disingenuous to the club because it's been tied up as parking. Just that lot was originally the parking for the hotel. When the hotel finally got down to a bunch of independent units, each of those houses had their own parking. Each of the Carnegie Suites had their own parking. Each of the villages had their own parking. So Carnegie came in and said, we don't need to tie that whole thing up for parking. We're going to have a marina. Let's change it from parking to marine buildings. They treated Lot Four, or which is the marina, with Lot Ten and Lot Two and all of them together and said, okay, that makes sense because we don't need parking to do it a marine building. Then it came back, the town approved a pretty substantial marina, for those of you if you remember. But Coastal Resource dropped that to what would be called a pretty small arena, marina that is really kind of unique just for Carnegie people at this point. It's not big enough to be a public marina. And Vernon Gordon then came back and said, Lot Ten, which is tied up for marine buildings, which would have been our ship chandary, the buildings to repair boats. We don't need any of that in a twenty-four, so now it's free. Now that it's free, may we develop with units? And again, we'll do it in such a way that we'll tie into the septic, and they convinced the engineering, and they approved those units. So that lot has been a number of things while all looking at whole. Now to treat that uniquely, which is how we got here, seems a bit fair. This first part of the ordinance, I don't think anybody ever had a problem with saying that this just makes sense to go to the planning board. Those of you that do zoning work, you know that the planning board sitting on a P U D or the zoning board are both, they seem the same vote, the same competency, the same public notice to everything. And remember, when you treat this as a whole, if you treat it in one lot, just Lot Ten as individual, I would only need to notify the people within two hundred feet of Lot Ten. And I didn't, I don't think that's right. But when you treat this as a resort, if Newport Beach Club does a resort, you got to go two hundred feet from the outskirts of all the properties. So there is advantages to neighbors without and within. Neighbors from without, no matter what border you share, you get notice. Neighbors from within, if something's happened a mile away on our property, you probably still have a stake in what happened under the general condo. You should be notified personally. So there's a lot of safeguards in what we propose. I truly don't see a downside to the town. I truly see it as putting, we codified an ordinance based on what we'd already built, so we could build it across the street. Why don't we have what we've already built regulated in the future? The standard to modify. Now, the second part of this is a tad more controversial because the language says we need to certify what's there so that we send it to the planning board. The planning board needs a starting point. If you just send them, say, and put the resort on it, and if a resort ordinance said that buildings would be thirty-five feet apart and in another area already built buildings are twenty feet apart, they certainly can't pluck them. We have to give grandfather rights to what is there. Nobody seems to have any problem with grandfather rights of what is built already. The question on the second part that we were pretty clear about putting in here and not disingenuous at all was we want what has been approved to be certified. Specifically, we'll start with three small examples. One is the marina. The marina, when it was modified, has one building down by the water that I believe has four units approved. That marina isn't. When we have a single special use permit, we normally make people do things within a year. But if you start the project, you're okay. So if I have a special use permit approving a hundred condos and I build two, I have no time limits on the other ninety-eight because I magically broke ground. So on the marina, we clearly magically broke ground. We built a marina. One of the accessory buildings is not built, is that time bar. Answer, I think nobody thinks that it is because that, at least the, I don't think any of it is because it's all should be looked at together, but even that marina decision has substantial compliance with something that was approved on that night. When the tower was approved, it was ultimately approved for eighty units. It's down to seventy-nine because there was a combination that had to go back to the zoning board. But they also had two suites buildings, which are twenty-four, two buildings with twelve units each, not built, but again, part of the same decision. Not very controversial because of the hundred million dollars you needed to spend to build that specific permission. You spent ninety of it. You just haven't done the last two buildings. Then there was Lot Ten. Lot Ten, had one of the buildings been built, clearly would have been grandfather. But because there's no shovel in the ground for a foundation on Lot Ten, at least reasonable people could differ on whether Lot Ten wasn't done. Again, my view is Lot Ten is an integral part of all of it. Every time we change the permission on Lot Ten, we change all the documents. The condo documents reflect Lot Ten. We, when in two thousand and ten or two thousand and nine, when we went to the, when Mr. When we went to the, when Mr. O'Neil, remember he was king, he owned everything. So it was interesting. But when he went to the Newport Beach Club Planning Board, he said, based on my approvals on Lot Ten, I need to put in drainage. And he secured an easement and permission with the railroad to put drainage had as a prerequisite of building the Newport Beach Club, putting the retention areas for it. Paid. And then Carnegie paid eighty some thousand dollars for that easement. So when you say nothing is done on Lot Ten, or at least when critics say nothing was done on Lot Ten, remember all the engineering was done on Lot Ten, all the condo documents reflected that Lot Ten was going to be what the new approval is. Everybody that buys down there gets a public offering statement that says, hey, this is this is what's approved on Lot Ten and this is who swims in your pool and plays on your tennis court. And eighty thousand was spent to secure it. All the engineering was done. And you can't get any more public than going to the Town of Portsmouth Planning Board and saying this is what we need to build on this side because it's part of our approvals on the other side. So I just what that portion of the ordinance says is we would like to send to the planning board. And you read my very lengthy history. Everyone of I picture the planning board is cert, has to certify what is currently Carnegie. They need to, where and Mr. Dupree has been working on it for us. He needs to do the plan and survey that we put in those maps to certify what is there so that the planning board has a starting point. And the only issue on that second portion of this ordinance is the starting point of includes all of the approvals that were in the various special use permits. And if that is done, now I think it's a very legitimate question to say, does that help or hurt? I don't think it matters. It matters that the planning board can look at it and does decide whether it meets it. But I think it's very important to know a little bit about the resort ordinance, specifically paragraph ten, which sets the criteria for modifications. If you certify this as a master plan, as approved by the planning board in order to modify it. I actually put this here because I know I was gonna need it. No timers. In addition, for acceptance of a proposed change. So now you have all of the special use permit criteria that you'd have at the zoning board. All of the extra criteria about wildlife preservation, open space calculations. In addition, the basis for acceptance of a proposed change shall include a finding that the public benefits and mitigation provided improves or remains equal to those originally approved. And that the change in the approved building and development program is sustainable and retains the character of the original concept. The planning board shall have authority to declare that the proposed changes taken as a whole are so such a significant departure from the original approval that it constitutes a new proposal. So it's gotta be better. Remember that we got here because we were trying, there's three petitions that we've been the people have talked to me about. One is to get rid of a marine building on the water and put us that had four units approved and put a single family house. I believe that I would hope to have the ability to convince a planning board that that is more in keeping less density and less effect on neighbors than uh something that was bigger. The twenty four suites buildings, there's discussions that they want to reduce that substantially by to four or five. That's another reduction. The thirty six units that were proved on Lot Ten, the one that we've already pitched to a number of boards was down to twenty eight units. So there was a reduction from thirty six to twenty eight on Lot Ten from four to one on Lot Four and from twenty four to five on two A. When you look at that and take that down, how many units are there now? Seventy nine in the tower, although eighty were approved. And that's because if you combine a unit, you actually have to go to the special, you have to go back and modify. Fourteen single family houses known as the residences. There were twenty four cottages or or the chateaus, twenty four, that would go down to five. There were twenty four villages. There's now twenty two. It might be twenty three, twenty one. But there's been two petitions, both of which I was either collateral or directly responsible for that took the lots at the villages and said, somebody wanted to buy the empty lot between two houses. Anybody else in town buys a lot between your two houses, you and your neighbor go, you want half, take it, I'll take half. You go to the planning board, say, add half to me and half had to you. When you have a master plan, whether it is at the planning board, resort ordinance, or because the special use permit encompasses the whole thing and you have condo docs, you have to go to the zoning board and say, can I reduce this? Standard is pretty easy because you're lessening development, but you have to add that and we've done that. So now what was a hundred? I think it's I know my final math. On the eighty acres, that seventy nine point eight acres, that is all the Carnegie property exclusive of the Abbey. The density is about nineteen thousand square feet per unit. If you include the golf course, it's eighty thousand square feet per unit. That's Little Compton zoning. And you have three hundred acres or so, I'll let Dennis correct me, but you have all the other acreage as open. All the golf course, quite frankly, once you tie up the acreage by master plan, I think it's already done by special use permit and lease, but once you tie it up, that stops any that in perpetuity, quite frankly, even after ninety nine years is going to make that difficult. So I think, remember the resort ordinance is two per acre. Technically, that's twenty, it's not quite twenty thousand square feet because it's, I think forty three thousand five sixty in an acre, so it's twenty one something. So as proposed, we're lowering density. That's not why we're here tonight, but I think it's a legitimate question to say if I read this, everybody must be pulling something. So you must be trying to get more development. We just want to ask to so far reduce, and we have been unable to do so on some pretty interesting legal theories based on, I call it, the sins or great efforts in the past, depending on who you talk to, I guess. I don't think it's any more complicated than that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Spell.
One quick question to Mr. Spell.
Sure.
Didn't the planning board recommend this particular proposal to work?
Well, under again, we, I recognize the issue. So I'm not, right? When I recognize the issue, because I wasn't, it's a completely different zoning board and completely different attorneys and everything.
Court, can you be, oh, I'm sorry. Just stand in front of the mic. It's directional. Thanks.
I went to Mike Assiola and said, I still think we got to do it as a special use permit because I don't think I want to do a law change to get this as a resort. When you go in front of the zoning board, every big petition refers it to both design review and to the planning board. So at that first meeting, although disclosed, nobody had really, in fairness, gone through it to, you know, I had, but I don't, in fairness to the town. We got sent and went. This started, it's got to be seventeen, eighteen months ago. We went to design review and got a positive recommendation, although they have their list of things that we needed to uh put into the petition. It then goes to planning board. Because as you guys recall, whenever zoning board has an issue that has especially drainage and traffic flow and things that were generally in the purview of the planning board, always the real construction aspect of it, it got referred to them for an opinion. It came back to the planning board with a positive opinion. It's not fair that they approved it. It's that there, but you are correct that it came back favorably with them looking at the things that I believe they generally get sent it sent to the planning board from the zoning board for, which is drainage, traffic, flow, those things.
I think my language was improvised. I think that they suggested to us that this was an appropriate change to the ordinance to allow them that the ability to review things like this.
Yeah, I actually, now I'm wrong. I was looking at when the zoning board sent it to the planning board, the Lot Ten petition. You're absolutely correct that every law change gets sent to your planner and gets sent to the planning board. And the planning board also made recommendation that we're pretty good at resorts. We were the only ones in town with present day uh experience. And it makes sense. We can handle it. So yeah, I'm sorry that you were right then.
That's why we created special ordinances for them to deal with stuff like this. I mean, there's certainly other arguments to come forward, I'm sure, or whatever, but you know, the larger thing, King's Grant, it's still, it's still like two hundred special use permit. I mean, that's just wrong. That doesn't make any sense. We butchered our zoning ordinance in order to accommodate what were reasonable development that we weren't prepared for or whatever at the time. Thank you. That's just me opining and I took less than a minute.
Well, another example is Carnegie Heights because Carnegie Heights is clearly a residential neighborhood now, but because it's an industrial, it's a sixty foot front yard setback, thirty foot side. So every time somebody builds a house and puts on an addition, it has to go forward as a dimensional variance. The real problem, I think, is if you certify, if you say that it was done wrong and it shouldn't have been done, you could convert things to a non-conforming. And if you start calling things non-conforming, well, now you can't modify, now you got all these people that can't modify anything without meeting expansions of non-conforming things. So even if your deck is in the middle of nowhere, you can't build it. So it it really does right some wrongs without giving an edge, in my opinion, to either the owner of property within or the abutter without. It's still going to be noticed. It's still going to be special use permit on steroids because it's special use permit with a lot of other criteria. And it's still going to be done on a now three to something vote.
So Mr. Chappelle, just to try to summarize a little bit, the um are we able to put the figure up or no? The plan, the plan that was in the pack?
Colored plan? I'm gonna stand right, I'm standing with the mic here. So you want me to explain that map?
Well, or explain it or or just confirm for me. The the area in purple, it the to to the south of Willow is what you're asking to be included in the planned unit development, correct?
The green?
No, 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 the the purple that's south.
The purple itself.
The darker purple.
Yes, and right now that purple is one half of a marina.
Yep.
A bit of Lot Four, the tower, the villages, the residences and the parking lot and entrance to the club.
And that and that's the piece that's essentially already been developed with with potentially the exception of a few of the approvals that they didn't build out. And that's the, you mentioned the the four units at the the end.
On the very end of the purple and the other ones are just up from that on the purple where you call the sales building.
Right. So and that then that was the two twenty four unit?
Yes.
Right. So those
Twelve.
Two twelve units. Uh um so and again, those those were essentially all reviewed and vetted through planning and zoning several years ago. The one in question, I think that you brought up is ten, right? It's parcel twen, it's twenty six dash ten.
Ironically, already in the resort district.
In the resort district, but is the issue there that you want it to be certified as a master plan? Because as you go through the process, it may get smaller. It probably can't get bigger because of
It can't get, yeah.
It can't get any bigger, but it could get smaller.
But without doing that, if I go and say, I've only got a quarter of a resort, which is the pink.
Right.
Then Lot Ten would have completely different density requirements because you look at things as a whole. And again, when you look at the warehouse or piece, you see where they left open space. Because we're a cluster zoning type of society now. We've gotten away from Little Compton that said two acre zoning was good. Two acre zoning took a three hundred acre lot and cut it into a hundred and fifty pieces and provided nothing. But cluster zoning gives us open space.
And and twenty six, ten, that what's identified there is twenty six, ten. You said that was at how many units, twenty, thirty?
Six point four acres. It was approved for thirty six units in seven buildings.
Right. So that was
Seven apartment buildings.
That was all reviewed and approved by planning and zoning. It's just that they didn't initiate the
Foundations aren't in, they only did the structure. They only did the drainage. Remember the septic was sized to it.
So if we were to approve this tonight, essentially what we're talking about is is for some of the counselors, I'm just trying to keep it on on, I'm trying to keep it like for processing here. The other pieces are within the areas that have already been built, but there's, there might be modifications and the only way the planning board can act on it or zoning is if we can move forward with this zone change or amendment.
On the jurisdictional change.
Yes. And really the same thing for twenty six, ten is if if we certify this as the part of the master plan. Is that
We never
The gray area?
The, I don't think twenty six, ten is uh gray because I think I've seen a position on that. That may be a different position on the suites because they're as the ex head, right? Clearly, it's, if I'm arguing in front of you or anyone, whether or not a special use permit that was granted has enough built to get rid of the timeliness factor.
Court, right, thank you.
Has enough built to get rid of the timeliness factor. The decision that approved the tower and the suites on the same day with the tower built, you're going to have a hard time saying we're not to fruition. On the marina, I think you're going to have a hard time because the marine is in. On that one, because it's only structurally in and only in our docks. I get that if you had built one building, you're all set, but you didn't build a building is is a possibility. So there may be a different legal argument. I will say this again, one, I got great respect for the room and the person that had a different opinion than me. And I don't think it's in the best interest of the town to have to to have a zoning board say, can you vote differently than what a lot of us think? When I can come to the council and say, hey, straight up, these are the two options. This is what I would like you to do. You are the ones that create the rules. You are the ones that according to our enabling legislation solve and can legislate administrative procedures to fix ambiguities. Will you do that for us so that we can go forward? And I think it's the right thing to do. I actually think it's what should happen in a courtroom if it happened. And more importantly, I think Carnegie deserves it. I really think they've been extremely good for us. Good neighbors that have done, unlike a whole bunch of zoning petitions that we follow twenty years later and say, did everything happen the way it was supposed to? I don't know how many people are here tonight, don't get me wrong, but remember, we had to notify every single person from within and without. And lots of times, there's, I I have no idea who's here, but lots of times, you know, people say, hey, that's Carnegie and they're doing a pretty good job down there of following the rules. So.
All right. I think I'm okay. Any further questions from?
I will point out, they only let me golf once there, and that was when I was on the town council forty years ago.
I'll let you know if they let me. That's not true.
All right, um, to
I do have questions.
Sure, absolutely. It's public here.
I wish I could say that this is black and white because you really muddle it up for me. I don't know if I'm the only one here that feels that way, but not having a legal background. I don't know if I'm the only one here that feels that way, but not having a legal background. I think some of it's a reflection of what the town gave us, and I'm referring to the planning board letter here, the advisory opinion that helped confuse me, because it appears that you were looking for, you know, Mr. Tibbetts at at the level made a motion and the subject was proposed zoning ordinance amendments, the Quinney Country Club, Zero Willow Lane, map twenty-six lot ten. And if you look at it, it's definitely north of Willow Lane, so it confused me right from the start. It looks like you're asking for something that you already have, but you're talking about a whole bunch of other stuff.
Yeah, I I didn't write that, as you know, but and and all of our, I I'd like to think that all of our letters and the ordinance that you saw proposed right from the get-go specifically says what lots that we're trying to the lots and numbers that we're asking to include on the south side.
I don't have that, you you mentioned a history, I didn't get a history. So I'm kind of at a loss for some of these things, but I'm gonna ask you some questions anyways.
That's great.
With me.
I think the only reason you might not have is because we're so old, and we've been at it for so long that it went
I get it, I get it.
For you.
Now, if you look at the uh vision appraisal, you'll see that um we started with Carnegie Harbor Village in two thousand and one. We went to Buttonwood Acquisition in two thousand and five, and now two thousand and nineteen, we're Quinney Country Club, Inc. And my first thought was, how much of this land is owned by the Abbey? So everything in green is
Just green.
Out of the picture of what you're asking for, because it's
Well.
For sale, per se.
It's it's the resort ordinance is a pretty well crafted ordinance. What it's saying is, I want to develop some land as a resort. But the first part of the resort ordinance is, you need the amenities. You can't go build a hundred and fifty houses and promise to build me a swimming pool. You're not a resort. The resort has to be first. We have to include it for the limited purposes of saying, if you get rid of that golf course, everything you see in purple and pink is a neighborhood. Right? Because the golf course, including the clubhouse, is the amenity. It is the club. There's a pool, granted, near the tower and a lot of the individual guys at the heights have it. But when Newport Beach Club came in, they had the pools. They had a function room that was designed. They had the tennis courts and the tennis village. They had the raised, I forgot what they call them, squash courts or whatever they are with things. They had tied into the stables. And they put together a package to the planning board and said, we're not just glorified neighborhood. These are our amenities. So I I don't think we can certify, and I think it's dangerous to certify a neighborhood. We can't say Sea Meadow, I certify as a resort. It's got to in fact be the amenities. And the reason is, there's more density in the resort than there is in general, single-family development. And the rationale is, those people are not going to be full-time residents. They're gonna be either summer residents or eighteen days a year or those things. So we can have some more density, as long as you can prove to me, it's in fact a club and a resort and where people come and it meets the criteria that would justify that increase. So the golf course is not included to say, we're adding units, because again, the nineteen ninety-eight decision says the golf course is in, but no building on it, right? And the lease, I believe Mr. Allen will tell you, says with the Abbey, as you can imagine, absolutely not. And that's a ninety-nine yearly, uh whi- which I guess is seventy years left or sixty-eight years left, or whatever the math from ninety-eight to twenty-three is. Seventy-five years left, I guess.
I'm really not sure where we went with that conversation, I apologize. Essentially, you have a golf course there now, whether you call this a P U D or not. People from the tower are still gonna use that golf course, whether it's whatever you call it. So I I was still confused as to to um why exactly you want to do this, but I I was also confused, because it it looked like our counselor, lawyer here, also disputed some of their findings. And I would like to hear from him as to why he thought his he had a different version of the way we should proceed, if I interpret it correctly. That make sense to you, Mr. Gavin?
Well, I thought the uh planning board attached a memo I had provided to the uh to their advisory opinion.
Yes.
Yeah, I I just raised an issue. What has a difference? I I I mean, this is obviously a very unique situation uh that's being proposed. And I just raised the issue whether uh uh the footnote part of this where the town council as a legislative body deeming special use permits to become a planned unit development, resort development retroactively. I just raised the issue of whether or not that is within the uh authority of the council as a legislative body to enact or or amend its zoning order. Because the council has no authority to grant special use permits or to grant variances or to grant other zoning rules that in P U D is under the jurisdiction of the planning board to approve or request for resort development. Uh special use permits are under the purview of the zoning board review. The council has authority to appoint those board and to put the ordinance in place, but doesn't have the authority to to grant a special use permit or to approve a P U D. So my question in my mind is, does the council have authority in its legislative capacity to deem a bunch of special use permits over a matter of decades, to deem them to become us of planned unit development retroactively? I just ra- I raised the issue, uh obviously. And and I instructed the planning board that they shouldn't bu- bother with that, because I mean, the council has broad broad powers to adopt the ordinance and to amend it, but they are limited, it has to be within the confines of the of the enabling authority. So I think there is a question there. And uh whatever the council does, there will be a presumption of of uh validity and um and uh
Mr. Gavin, man, because it's funny, we we now have two attorneys haven't spoken. Now we got a three and I see Lenny going for his button.
I mean, I I don't want to get too too, I mean, I, the memo is in the backup. I mean, I said what I said, but if
I mean, just hypothetically, I don't want you to answer that. If we decide to rezone King's Granted Residential, that would be fine. We're not changing all of the things that they had before. We would just be recognizing something on the ground. And I think this is, we have, because we are the zoning board, fundamentally, everybody else just takes their orders from us. We have the authority, I think, to say what in fact in town is special use, planned unit, that's our job, nobody else is. And I agree with you, I read your thing and I was thinking, that's interesting, because if it was a backdoor way to get a permission, that would be a problem. But it's not. And and I think it's a very interesting thing, and quite frankly, I think it's the right thing to do, because we want all of these things analyzed together. But that's me, not as a attorney now, have a legislative.
I would I would just add that it uh that whatever the council does will have a presumption of validity. No one might have an issue or concern at all about this. And um and someone questioned it, I mean, I I would uh be defending the ordinance and the council's actions, so I don't want to I don't really have a debate over hypothetical situations, if possible.
Could I just ask one question to finish that with the Gavin? Would you suggest that it it seems like what we're asking for is some of these projects that were planned years ago and never, no shovel in the ground, no progress on. We're just asking for them to all proceed, just to give a a free pass, to call it a unit, you know, P U D. And any of that was proposed in the past is on the table and go. Would you say that's a, you can as- assume that this is something that's being accomplished by going this route?
Well, I mean, what's provoked, I mean, what's before the council is what was proposed by the uh petitioner seeking the amendment. I think, you know, it speaks for itself, I mean, they would, they want the footnote to be expanded to say that that all those prior approvals, especially use permits, are deemed to be an approved P U D under the P U D uh planned resort development ordinance. I mean, that's what they're asking, that's what the council is gonna decide, acting in the legislative capacity this evening.
It it's hard to call it a free pass, we have a half a billion dollars in the ground, a half a billion
I I get it, I get it, I'm just trying to
And a lot of towards this, but it it I I think you're right that we are saying we're trying to send a starting point to modify down on, but passes, I just can hear some people that I care about cringe.
One more minute before you get to your legal questions, because I remember some of the things of the past. I mean, the billing that you mentioned down at the Marina that you want to change now was sold to the town as, we're gonna have, we're gonna have people from around the world sail into that Marina, and that's where they're gonna stay overnight. And that was gonna be the barracks for them, and then they would move on. So all these things have been pitched over the years. The the main one that I'm concerned with is we've always been pitched that there's gonna be low to moderate income housing. And I'm just curious whether the, that's something in the future that you can discuss. Because all areas are subject to that now, some some weren't in the past, up until I think nineteen
I I think there's one low to moderate income requirement that was put on one of the two permissions. Not sure if, I thought it was the beach club. And nothing here is changing that, there is. And the density was calculated, so whatever the total density was and the L M I set by the boards at the time, we haven't asked to modify that at all. And the resort ordinance
That as a community, we have a certain amount of of available housing for people with less means. And in our ordinance, we always insisted somebody coming in with a plan comply with that. And in fact, sometime, we overbuilt bore on them a little bit, saying, you're gonna solve our problem. So it's not like, you know, they they have gone off that they're complying with the state law that said, we must do something, we put it in our ordinance.
The question is, are they doing that? Will they be doing that?
I think they're required to, I'm I'm sorry, they're they're required to because of two things, one, state law, two, the the P U D, and I mean, the thing is, we have a pretty good planning board that's always overseeing these things. And that's why we hire them, or not hire them, because we don't pay them. But and and I will tell you, David, and you know this, for all of my lifetime, the planning board has been stalwart. They have always been there, people like Seventy and all those people that were, knew this town better than anybody.
I I just, I'm gonna follow up on, I think, and clear, try and clarify, Mr. Gleason's question. Specifically, where is the L M I component of these projects located within the town?
My understanding is there was an approval for off-site.
Right.
My memory, it was Weaver Cove, and it isn't done, right?
It was sold.
So there is, the requirement still runs with the permissions that were given. And we're not saying today, if you say certify all the permissions, to the extent that was in a special use permit, still exists. You're not wiping it out, that's a fair, great question, but to my knowledge, you're not wiping it out. And if it's in the uh Newport Beach Club, or I think it is, because this, the P U D ordinance is uh for Marina Village, at least we looked up, has not only a section for L M I and the ten percent rule, but also the only fee in lieu, which under our Portsmouth ordinances. So actually, I don't know, it's not specifically in the resort district, but it it is in the Article eight P U D subsection C instead of D, Marine Village instead of, so I don't think it's that much of a stretch to do a fee in lieu. Most of the times with the L M I, that is a solution in a lot of towns, but it has to be in your ordinance. So it, you could get a bootstrap on this from that. But I think, again, whatever was set, my memory of the resort ordinance was because of hotel rooms don't have L M I components and resort units weren't even houses. So they didn't count on either end. They didn't count on low to moderate, but they didn't count as units. Because you wouldn't account, you know, times there was certain things that are exempt, just like a you know, let's face it, they exempt trailers and nobody really understands why.
Because they can leave.
But that
They have wheels, that's that's it. That's the only, that's the only answer I've gotten in fourteen
Right, but but not a one of them. If you drive down and put a truck on any one of them, that's not possible, right?
Unless it's on an individual lot, then you could probably consider it.
It's really not directly related to this request, the amended, the amendment requested, but um there's been recent discussion of a of a a development that may be coming down the pike down Weaver Cove area. And that's the L M I that was contemplated in the approval for the Newport Beach Club. And um those units are anticipated to be built as part of that that project that has not yet even been
Right.
Applied for for a master plan, but those L M I units are are contemplated to be part of the proposed development at Weaver Cove.
The ones from
I don't know that there was any in the but I guarantee if if we were to add units other than those approved, and I don't really see where Carnegie has the land to do it, but assuming Carnegie bought a piece inside the resort and said, we have an extra piece of land and add it, under the new resort ordinance, any, if there's ten new lots, there's one new L M I or whatever the ten percent math is. So I think that's better under the special use permit, that wasn't a requirement. So I think it actually adds to that, to be honest with you.
The presentation I heard on the ones down in Melville is ten percent, I think it's forty units down there, but they all pertain to that development.
The Newport Beach.
Yes, not Newport Beach. The proposed one down near Weaver Cove, that's the way they presented it.
No, I discussed that with Leo, we weren't exactly sure, but
Well, it'd be ten percent of the four hundred here.
Right.
Which would be forty.
For them, right, for that particular project as opposed to
Newport Beach Club, I know, has a hundred and fifty-eight units, so ten percent would have been fifteen point eight.
Right.
It's actually going to be greater than ten percent.
Yeah.
They have their own requirement, and then they've assumed the requirement from, I believe it was Newport Beach Club. So there'll actually be more than ten percent L M I in that proposed development.
But if I could just say
With respect, you know
Can I just
We are going a little far afield of what Mr. Chappelle
Right, it's not really germane to this
Well, then let's not do it.
The developers and owners of those properties are not here and it's really not on the agenda.
Right.
And we did just approve fifty-four on Bristol Ferry Road with no basically set off.
Okay, so let's just, yeah, I think Mr. Gleason or Mr. Hamilton, are are you guys all set? I just wanted to make, I didn't know if David's done.
I was just trying to clarify.
Okay, all right.
So I guess, does the effect of this change in ordinance change the potential for development of other parts of the town? It seems specific to this property that we're discussing.
I I personally, I kind of don't think it's a bad idea if anywhere in town you could build a resort, but that's not I I'm not the town planner or the council.
Right.
We were asked in this particular situation to include only that land which is already dedicated to this resort. That's just a, now is, um, I don't know if your taxes is still here. The green is technically a bunch of different lots, but it's only portions. Remember that it's all owned by the Abbey. So the way the town did it was they didn't take each of the small pieces that it touches. They have a C A category, which is the main lot of the Abbey thirty-two, three, C A Carnegie Abbey. And they took land that wasn't taxed. And they did the assessment on the clubhouse and the units and taxed Carnegie based on twelve million dollars. Then they took the golf course and said, even though the grass at your house and a sand trap at your house is not an improvement, hundred and fifty grand per hole times eighteen, and it's another almost four million dollar assessment for land which was off the rolls. So this
I think the point is, it's not a precedent.
No.
In other words, this, we are a legislative body, if we do this, it's not a precedent that somebody from the north end of or south end of town or whatever can come in and say, you did it over there. I mean, they can say it, but we're not bound by it.
They could come in and ask for a zone change and you would say, have to say, this is a little different, you're not built already.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I I, so I am an attorney, but I don't practice in this area of law at all. So I actually have an advantage of not being as deep in the weeds. Here's How I see it is three pieces here. You're asking for an amendment that we have a a planned resort development zone. I was actually on the council that adopted that. And I think that made all the sense in the world at the time. Part one of the request is to extend that zoning to North Willow Lane by adding the lots that you named. I think that's a no brainer, frankly. The second, the third piece is just not real, not, we're talking about the second piece is. And for the existing lots that are, that were all of these special use permitted areas that we're extending the planned unit development over. We're going to deem them as. Planning development obadicio, right? And so the special use permit requirements that they're living under, to the extent they still exist or don't, because again, I don't do zonings, I don't. Goes away and they're all just under planned use development zoning now. I I don't have a problem with that. My only question is, by deeming it to be existing and superseded. Does that prejudice anyone's rights on those properties now? And this is a public hearing. I don't see anybody rising to talk against this. But, well, okay, there may be some folks here. That is my only question is. If we're going to take away someone's zoning and replace it with a different zoning. What what are the repercussions?
I think it's a fair question. In my opinion, what you're doing is you're saying we're extending the jurisdiction, but. The same way we, whenever we change the zoning, we have to grandfather what currently exists. Right? So you're grandfathering the tower. There's no building and zoning ordinance in town, including the resort ordinance that allows a two hundred foot high building. It allows a forty foot building, right? So, but you have to grandfather what exists. So I don't think anyone has a problem of grandfathering, again, everything that exists as it is. And as to neighbors, it is saying what is there only if approved. If some guy built something that wasn't approved, we're not saying grandfather everything somebody did without a permit. We're saying as to what is recorded that the zoning board went through and blessed. Grandfather that as to what it exists, but that does have that caveat of the unbuilt things, specifically the approvals that are. Now, now again, if you're from within, you have condo docs that say this is approved. So, you know, I may not like what was approved if I'm from within next door. Maybe I like it, maybe I don't, but I bought knowing what was there. If you're a neighbor, you at one point had a hearing to go to and say pro or con. And again, I think there's a pretty good argument that it's, there is a right by these guys to do it. And all the proposals, especially the one that brought us here that went back to the planning board, was to reduce that by twenty percent, you know?
In fact, if I could ask, I'd like to ask the town solicitor. Is my very high level of understanding of how I stated it. Accurate? And is the response from the petitioner. Also accurate in that grandfathered that things that are there, we're not taking away anything because it's grandfathered.
Yeah, I mean, one way to look at it is, those special use permits were all granted in the past. I guess they're not gonna disappear, but the the it's gonna be deemed to be. Gonna give court and his client the ability to sort of repackage this and go back, go to the. Uh, planning board and say, look at this entire area.
Unless, if I may, unless someone, when that happens, challenges before the planning board that we didn't have the right to, we're doing because it's cloudy or the law isn't settled, who knows what. And say that what what we did today is doesn't accomplish what the petitioner hoped it would. That's possible.
Uh, well, I mean, the issue, the issue would be whether it's within the scope of the authority granted by the Enabling Act.
And and that that would be litigated.
And again, that would be, that would be presumption of validity to the legislative.
And subject to a timely appeal. I I will tell you, though, that I might be the only guy in the room. When Newport Beach Club, you know I'm a neighbor, right? Newport Beach Club got approved. And they went to modify. They got some new owners and they went to modify specifically to put a couple of house slots right along the pond. I live on the other side of the pond and I had been pretty vocal early. There were neighbors at the top of the road that wanted things done. There were neighbors at the bottom to leave some wildlife management area. I stopped the modification using Article ten, saying, how can you say it's more fitting? When preserve the wildlife, preserve the open space, preserve the pond, which was a special area management. And the planning board works. So again, when I say. This doesn't mean we have a right to do what we're gonna do, but I think we should have the right to ask under a more stringent ordinance. Than if we waved a wand and said, just go do it as a special use permit like you usually did. I still have eight less things to prove. So I I think it works for the neighbors and for us.
I I hate to. Ham. Well, I don't hate it, maybe. Anyway, I just wanted to, for my own peace of mind, and after our experience with our solo ordinance, I just want to make sure that. What we do here tonight with this change in the ordinance is going to affect primarily this one property for this, and it will not. Result in a significant change in the ability of other parts of the town to be developed.
That's correct.
Okay, that's my only question.
Yeah, no, I just, I wanted to see if counselors were all set, because it's a public hearing, so I do want to open it up to any. Members of the audience, if you'd like to come up and speak, and also we'll check what's online. But I'll take in-house audience members first. Just name an address for the town clerk.
My name is Scott Hallman. I'm from two eighty-eight Bristol Ferry Road. I'm not sure by the map, but if the new. District. Runs and includes the old Newport Beach Club. I believe I've got five properties that are within two hundred feet of this new district. My concern is not Carnegie. I think Carnegie's done a great job. I really disagree with the Newport Beach Club and highly disagree with this, what's the name of the district? Resort District. Here's my example for you. I want to offer this to each and every one of you on this council. I love the Portsmouth Overlook. You know what I'm referring to on West Main Road? My property on two eighty-eight Bristol Ferry Road was an awesome example of the Portsmouth Overlook. I have one of the original houses from the Warehouser property. Small house, half acre lot, three bedroom home. It's on a highway and I bought it because my backyard was the Portsmouth Overlook. It had a ten percent at least grade in the backyard on the Warehouser property, so steep I couldn't walk my dog on it. As this meeting, I flew home from Nevada. To be here, I was at every single meeting against the Newport Beach Club with their. Zoning and the way this was gonna work. What myself and every neighbor. Was concerned about was our view and our vista and my overlook, my own personal home and why I bought it, which I would argue is extremely devalued now. I beg each and every one of you to please visit my property. Come to my backyard, you're welcome. Stand there and see exactly what I'm speaking of. What had happened with the Newport Beach Club, and I'm not saying Carnegie would do this, but they'd have the ability to do this. What they did. Was they got their zoning and their setbacks and all their density, and I understand the idea of including some of this. My concern is, as I went to every single meeting and we watched the grade of the land and all that alleged hazmat material and everything that was at Warehouser. I never saw one truck leave, but it all disappeared. The land got raised, so they took my backyard, it was a beautiful plateau. And it went like this, and they raised up all that land. I flipped out. I said, oh, my God, what's gonna happen? I spoke to court. I spoke to anybody that would listen to me. And they said, oh, but Mr. Hallman, let me show you another plan and another plan. And I've got, oh, man, I could fill my living room with the plans I have out here. That very clearly showed each and every house that was going to be developed on that upper road that I was concerned about. I was gonna have a vista. You could be off on this. I think the spacing was twenty feet per house or something, i.e. forty, or maybe it was thirty, it was a sixty foot vista. With multiple copies of the little plot plans, every single plot plan showed, yes, there would be a home built behind my house and one to the right of it and one to the left of it. But with a vista, so that each and every one of us on the top at Bristol Ferry Road would still have a view of the lighthouse. You stand just right, you can see Mount Hope Bridge. It's, it was beautiful. Now, you had mentioned about one thing that they can do is once you have your district, you can combine lots without asking permission. And that's exactly what happened behind my home. Somebody came in and bought two lots, side by each. They combined them together without a butter approval. And they built a McMansion behind me. Beautiful house. Wish I owned it. But it completely blocked my view and devalued my property, so much so that I have bought another piece of property in town to move. It's that concerning to me. I would argue my property is extremely devalued. I don't get it. I went to every meeting. I was promised a vista. It was never gonna change. So my question on this is, I get that the green has to be included, so I'm really not against the purple, whatever, I get it. I think what they've built is wonderful. I kind of understand, you know? My bigger concern is like with the green, if I'm understanding you correctly, the only thing that's preventing you from building a building on that. Is a ninety-nine year lease with the school, that the town would lose the ability to say, no, you can't build a building there. Am I off on that? You know, Mike?
And first of all, I was, when he was saying that he was there with me, he was there because we were both, we were both the butters, okay? And I understand exactly where it's coming from.
The Abbey right now, because of a ninety-nine year lease that says we'll have no buildings, has no buildings. The Abbey right now, under the resort district, if you make it, is part of the nineteen ninety-eight that says thou shalt not put buildings on the Abbey land. So it's already double protected. Be honest with you, if it's not a resort. Abbey's never gonna do it, so I think we're talking theory here, guys, because the Abbey acquires property. They don't get rid of it. That's our twenty, residential twenty. You could put a six hundred. Lot subdivision on that property if, depending on where the wetlands were on a golf course. Any golf course, we've seen it. I recall playing golf on Pecassett. Right? Pecassett's now a bunch of houses, so that could be all over the hillside and and where they were done. When you tie it in with permit, you're really gonna add one more restriction because you're gonna have to get, you have to get permission to take it out. I I I, so, I get it.
I want to tell you just a quick story. I represented the Briggs family that sold the the golf course, the the big lot there. Okay, and I represented Freddie Briggs, and if you knew Freddie, he was a great man, he's a classic. But he was negotiating with Father Peter, the other classic history, okay? But Father Peter was going, you know, we've been here for a hundred years. We're gonna be here for a thousand years more. And then Brett said to me, so I figured I'm just charging him one dollar an acre for that thousand years, and that's how he got all the money from them. They're not changing. They're not going anywhere. Can I ask you one session question? How far do you live from the water?
Bristol Ferry Road, it's way up the top of the hill. I'm not sure what that.
I'm very familiar with it, and I'm just saying, so you're about a mile from the water at least?
With a gorge, used to be a gorgeous view. They changed the topography and.
Okay, and I gotta say, all that land's owned by somebody else.
Oh, that's why, no kidding, when I bought, when I bought that house and I bought it at the top of a plateau, I remember thinking to myself, well, if anybody ever built beneath me. They're so far down beneath me that it wouldn't matter, you know? It definitely matters. They built up the land a lot, not a little bit, a lot. I get it. It's unfair for me to stand here and say, oh, you can't build behind me because you're gonna block my view. I was on a plateau with a view like this. They did this and then built a great big house here. They didn't build a great big house down here. You know what I mean? That that's my problem. And when they combine the two lots to get rid of the vista. I was definitely not notified to give one last chance to say, no, please don't combine those two lots. You know, that that unfortunately is part of that district, that they're allowed to do that once they do that. So nothing against Carnegie. I think what they've built is very nice on those lots. But I'm very fearful of how it could expand it.
Yeah, so I think, Mr. Hallman, to to your your question, though, was. The the area in green, which is currently the golf course.
Could they plateau that and build?
Well, I I mean, the issue is, is is there's already a a restriction that prevents any development, any residential development on the golf course. And so if if those, if this were to move forward, they would have to get that changed by the council or 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 something, but.
I can see why I particularly don't like this district. I mean, it's, I I was promised that there was gonna be vistas. There's no way.
Yeah, no, no, I I definitely understand what you're saying. I I do know I was a member of the zoning board. When this was going through with the Abbey, they are not about to build on their on their land unless it benefits the school and it's an amenity to the school dorms, that that type of thing. But the area that you you have mentioned, which is the area that's in the purple and the pink, that's the stuff that's already built out, and I think that's what's on the table for them to continue to. Develop under under some of the prior approvals.
Does this extension, so I think you mentioned before that this current district. Is everything north on Willow Lane?
Already, the district is. Already, the district is defined by Mount Hope Bridge, Bristol Ferry and Willow. So your properties are already all in the resort district. It's really just adding the purple and the green for the limited purpose.
Also add the other side of Willow Lane, the side that's not in the green?
No, oh, sorry. No, it specifically is shaded, and it's only that area that's currently occupied. All the, all those houses and vacant lots, those are still, I believe, R twenty.
So I would have three lots, are the three lots already in that? So the three lots are on this side of Brownell and.
They they remain R twenty. They're they're outside of the P U D.
No, his his property is on the north side of Willow.
North side of Willow.
Would be in the P U D that exists.
And if he sold those two, if you gathered enough pieces to be able to convince the planning board that you could have an independent resort. Or if you could add on to continuous Newport Beach Club, because it's R twenty and inside that jurisdiction, you could ask that it be part of it. But nobody can compel that.
I just want to make.
That's what I was concerned about, was obviously, I'm not a big fan of what got built at Newport Beach Club. Because of the promises, because of coming to every single meeting and being reassured a hundred times, and I do understand, Mr. Levec, you're correct. And then I don't feel a neighbor should be able to say, this is my property, that's your property, you can't do that. My problem is you changed the topography of the property and changed all the rules and then combined two lots. Without neighbor approval is what blocked my view. That combining of the two lots was the straw that broke the camel's back. Otherwise, we were good.
You would hope everybody'd be a good neighbor. You would, you know.
Let's not hope, let's regulate. Let's, that's what this should do, not hope. Thanks, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Hallman. Again, this is a public hearing. Are there, are there, anyone else in the audience want an opportunity to speak?
There's a handful of questions on the.
Yep.
My name is Thomas Laneres, one eighty-two West Main Road, and I just have a quick question. This proposal, is that only gonna affect west of the railroad tracks?
Yes.
Will this be able to creep up Willow Lane at some point?
They they would have to come back to get approval.
Okay.
They they would have to come back, but it's the area in the dark purple that's being, and the green, that are being added into what already exists as the.
Right, so it can't, the way it is right now, it can't move up west.
That was my question. West and south, right? South, south of Willow.
West of the railroad tracks.
Yeah, and if you look at the brown.
Gotta go in front.
Do you see the brown, which is the piece of property up on West Main? Specifically, that's Aquinita Club property, but it's not developed. It was Aquinita Club property. I know we sold it, but we, the club had that done. Specifically, we didn't include that. Because that would be adding development rights that we didn't have, and that would have been disingenuous, quite frankly, without saying, hey, by the way. And that would have been disingenuous, quite frankly, without saying, hey, by the way, you can, we can add to this. That was specifically excluded before it was sold, because it was sold after we started.
My other question is, the property at the corner of Willow and West Main, is that owned by? Oh, it is not part of it, but it's owned by Aquinita. Right, okay, but it's not owned by them now. Thank you, because there is another example of building.
Happened to my sister, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so is there anyone else in the audience? All right, we have some questions online or comments?
The, the, the first one goes directly to you, Court, and the Aquinita Club. Specifically, what are, what is it that you're trying to do? This is from a resident in the tower. So she's concerned about parking at the tower. Specifically, so there's really nothing we can do in this discussion.
There's nothing being changed regarding any physical structure of what's already been approved. Over on the, uh, any of the specially approved use permits, which is. You know, you have some parking in Lot Two, you have parking inside, and you have the. The parking garage, structure parking. But we're not taking, there's no, e- even where there's proposed development, now there's not a current parking spot that's being. Dislocated or relocated because.
I don't understand what she means by Lot twenty-six-ten is not a wharf, it's so, it appears it's not a wharf, it's an open space with. Nothing, it's a vacant lot, right next to the railroad tracks in the, uh, the horse path or what do you get?
That's a va- on the Clamshell Road, that is a vacant lot.
Uh, I understand, hang on, go, come back, yeah, there's more. No, I understand the resort zoning will change height variances, allowance for houses and setbacks, and someone addresses. The height variance is gonna stay the same, you're actually condensing the number of houses and setbacks.
Yeah, and.
Setbacks will actually be greater than they were with thirty-four houses or thirty-six houses. Potentially, that's up to the planning board, not us.
It, it's up to the planning board, but under the special use permit, there's, there's parts of the Carnegie Village that. Had no regulation as to setbacks. The map, the resort ordinance has setbacks. The industrial height is forty feet, I believe, and the resort is forty feet. Uh, most of your town is thirty-five, but. There's no, if a portion of this were R twenty or thirty, and we were adding it, I suppose it would add five feet. Nobody is, I pretty much guarantee in that flat very area by the Clamshell Road where the division is. Height is not an issue, but again, it's the same as it would be. The green that is not gonna be development, but really just part of it to attach the amenity. Uh, that would change it from forty to thirty-five, even though there's no proposals to ever do that at the Abbey.
Any, any more comments, questions? It's a public hearing, so I just, I wanna give everybody the opportunity.
Excuse me, Mr. President, I would move there be no further, um, people that we include with the public hearing.
Second, all those in favor?
I.
Oh, nope.
Mr. Katzman?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Leveque?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye, motion passes six to zero to close the public hearing.
Okay, Mr. President, can I just? Um, Mr. Chappelle, you included, uh, in your letter a proposed amendment to the zoning and the ordinance, I believe. As, um, and, and attachment, if you will, to your correspondence, is that the language you are seeking?
Yes, um, and specifically, if I can find it, it just says, it mimics the old definition of jurisdiction. And then says, but including the portions of the following lot.
And those on page three are the lots you want to include?
Yes, and the representation clearly is that that is only the area that's occupied. In the purple and green, only the area currently either owned. The, the area we call the club or the golf course, there's nothing hidden in one of those that you need to check and say, I know you don't, excuse me that, but.
And I gotta say.
But I represent that it matches.
So long, and I don't think you've ever misled me, but hit me up a few times, but you never misled me.
It does match them, it, it's, as a condition that it matches the map would be perfectly acceptable if you see fit to approve.
Okay, Mr. President, I would move that we approve the proposed amendment to zoning ordinance as presented by Mr. Chappelle. Being two and three, page two and three, of the letter that he attached to his correspondent. Dated August fifth now of two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Can I, can I just briefly say, we created districts like this to give us more intelligent control. Over larger developments, and it seems to me that we, we should encourage it. We got a great planning board, if they need a relief, they can go to the zoning board. But I really would urge my colleagues to vote for this, because I think that this is the way you properly develop.
Thank you, Mr. Leveque. Okay, so we had a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Mr. Katzman?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Leveque?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye, motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, Mr. Hamilton, didn't you tell me you had a, a law that said we couldn't go beyond eight o'clock?
Ten.
Ten.
It's not a law, it was a, uh, understanding.
Okay.
Th- th- this would be why I asked you to start at six.
But we still got, yeah, we still got Zach after that, okay. We're gonna keep moving here.
That's why you napped at four.
The, the next item on our agenda, uh, new business number two. It's a request, the Opera funds for the Prudence Island Water District. We have the correspondence, and this is, if Prudence Island Water District came before us. Um, we allocated three hundred thousand, oh, okay, Robin's here, sorry, Robin.
All right, were you chatting for me?
That's okay. I was, I was gonna tee it all up for you, go for it.
Hello, Mr. President, members of the council, I'm back, right? So I was here in June, and as you said, from the three hundred thousand, that was a set aside for Prudence Island Water District. System improvements, um, we've only asked for seventy-seven, uh, seventy. Seventy-seven thousand, so we've got some funds, um. Still to spend out of that pot, we'd like to ask now for a hundred and sixty thousand, which I admit, I'm hoping is rather a high-end estimate for the. Actual fix that we're doing, um, but the intent is to. Make the, uh, southern end of the system more reliably high-pressure zone, which is what we need. So it works most of the time, occasionally it doesn't. Um, it's pretty significant when it doesn't, we end up de-watering or depressurizing that area. Fluorinating, sending out samples, yada, yada.
President, uh, this is exactly what we determined. Over a year ago, I think, uh, to dedicate these kinds of fun stories, at least a portion of the Opera funds towards. Uh, I, I would move that we approve the, uh, the request.
Second.
Any further discussion?
All.
Because I wasn't part of that initial discussions of, have the dollar amount, you're looking for a hundred and sixty thousand.
Yeah, we had, we had a lot of, if you look in the back of the list of the Opera money, and it goes three hundred thousand allotted specifically for this. I'm coming back and asking each time she, the, the authority needs some more. So we're hoping it gets done for two hundred and thirty, and we have an extra thirty left over, seventy left over. Yeah, or something else.
Have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Mr. Katzman?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Leveque?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye, motion passes.
And for the record, Robin, in the future, you can be on Zoom and ask these questions. We have to be here, you could be on Zoom.
I, I totally appreciate the work you guys do, I don't know if, uh, if I could do this every two weeks, because I, I just couldn't, so, but thank you. Thank you.
Have a safe, are you heading back to the island? All right, so let's, uh, move on, um, new business number three, it's our request approval to. It, well, it was just the request, and the other one was the recommended improvements, but yes, that was the, yeah. So the next one is the request approval to amend resolution, uh, twenty twenty-two oh one twenty-four, it's the exemption.
Mr. President, this is a yearly, uh, adjustment done by the Tax Department, I move that we approve.
Second.
Um, Mr. President, I do wanna speak to them briefly. This was my doing back in nineteen ninety, and I am glad to see that it's been updated. And, and quite frankly, this is a very important thing that the town does, recognizing our seniors and giving them an exemption. So thank you for reminding us. I, I hope you're in favor.
Be here another year.
Mr. Leveque, to add to that, I would request that, you know, more seniors come forward and utilize it, because a lot don't.
Yeah, yeah.
And that they're a, a, available to them.
And they deserve it.
Yes.
I know, you know that.
Right, so all those in favor?
Mr. Katzman?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Leveque?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye, and I would like to thank Mr. Helfen for his eloquent arguments.
And Mr. Aguirre.
Aye, motion passes six to zero. Uh, moving on to new business number four, it's a request to advertise for a public hearing for the proposed amendment to chapter twelve of the town code entitled. Court Municipal.
Mr. President, I move that we advertise as reported.
Second.
All those in favor?
Mr. Katzman?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Leveque?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye, motion passes six to zero. And next item, number five, it's a request approval of the Town of Portsmouth Pension Investment Policy Statement.
Mr. President, members of the council, I provided you with Town of Portsmouth's Pension Investment Policy Statement. Revised and approved by the Pension Investment Committee during its meeting on January tenth. Previous policy statement was updated in June twenty twelve, this represents a total rewrite. And the major changes include, we have changed the investment advisor from Symmetry Partners to Principal Global Advisors. We expanded the allowable investment categories, and we revised the asset allocation guidelines, which you can see in Appendix A of the document. So I respectfully submit this for your approval.
Mr. President, I move that we approve as the D A, pension meeting, uh, the only thing that is in there that might. Tweak interest is what's called a GIC, and that's essentially a, uh, certificate of deposit that town can enter into with. Principal, to get a set return on investment for, uh, a fixed period of time.
I think that's the guaranteed interest contract, which, um, so we have a motion in a second.
Yes, it wa- didn't exactly, it, it's an old category that didn't make any sense, because interest rates are so low. Now the interest rates are higher, it makes sense to add it into the portfolio and give that flexibility.
So we have a, a motion in a second, um, any comments? All those in favor?
Mr. Katzman?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Leveque?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye.
I'd like to just.
Yeah.
Add our thanks.
Yeah, well, I, I was gonna, I was gonna add our thanks to the, uh, to the members. Yes, the members of the Pension Investment Committee, uh, for, for going through this process. Uh, it took a few months, I apologize, I was able to attend, uh, one of the meetings, but, um, I know Mr. Hamilton was there. Uh, Mr. Greed was there, and a lot of work went into this, there was some, really some creative thinking. Little outside the box thinking, as Mr. Hamilton mentioned. You know, because of the way the economy's gone, and, and now you can get these guaranteed interest rates on some of these bonds, it really. The strategy makes a lot of sense, and I think Mr. Harris. Um, one of his quotes was, you know, we have to manage to the, to the return. And, uh, this is a strategy that helps us do that.
It helps us lower the soon greater return by guaranteeing a good portion of the money.
Yeah, so, I mean, hats off to all the members of the pension.
Hopefully we can get the pension system solid faster.
All right, so we are moving on. We have correspondents.
Can I ask that Correspondent seven be removed? I just want to speak briefly to it.
We, we, we put it on next meeting, next agenda. We put it on the next agenda, by, by the new laws.
We'll put it on the next agenda.
So I, I would move that we file, put, receiving place on file items one through six and move number seven to the next meeting.
Seconded.
Excellent, all those in favor?
Uh, Mr. Katzman?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Leveque?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye, motion passes six to zero. Uh, next we have, uh, future meetings, um, as Mr. Rayner mentioned earlier, uh, January thirtieth is our ethics training. Uh, then we have February thirteenth, twenty-seventh, and March thirteenth, all seven P M meetings.
Just a quick question on the ethics, so we can all do it by Zoom, correct? We don't have to be there.
That's correct.
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
We don't have to physically be here for the ethics, we can do it online.
You can all. But, but we would like, you would need to make sure that you're present, so you'd need to show yourself, not put a picture up.
Yep, yep, that would be unethical, but you show a picture.
Yeah, well, because you don't know if you've walked off, you're not really.
I know, I, trust me, that's not a meeting you wanna miss.
Just because you can see my face doesn't mean I'm paying attention.
All right.
So.
So, next, we need a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go into executive session under Rhode Island General Law forty-two, forty-six, five, A, five, um, litigation. Or discussion of real, acquisition of real, excuse me, any discussions and considerations related to the acquisition of real. Or lease of real property for public purposes, or the disposition of publicly held property, where in advance, public information would be detrimental to the interest of the public. God, I hate lawyers speaking.
Do we have a motion? All those in favor?
Mr. Katzman?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Leveque?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye, motion passes six to zero, we will get into executive session here shortly. Close the doors. The cone of silence?